Good evening, everyone. This is James Rhodes, Pitt County Planning Director. We are going online with a remote meeting for the first time tonight. Our Vice Chairman, Mr. Brad Guth, will be conducting the meeting, so we are pleased that you joined us tonight. And Vice Chairman Guth, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, James. I appreciate it. Welcome, everybody, to the Planning Board meeting on Wednesday, April 15th, 2020. And we'll turn it back over to James to call the roles.
Thank you. Fred Austin. Mr. Austin.
I am here.
Fay Barefoot.
Just like this, okay? They're just...
Don Brown.
Here.
Naomi Buck. David Davenport.
Here.
Mr. Guth, Mr. RJ Hemby. Steve Little. Steve Little. Tucker Moore.
Here.
Maria Rogerson.
Here.
Danny Smith.
Here.
Mr. Vice Chairman, you have a quorum tonight.
Super. Well, if we can have a moment of silence now, please. Thank you. And James, if you would mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United...
The United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mr. Chairman.
Do you need to review the minutes from the January 15th meeting? If so, I'd like to get a recommendation for approval.
So moved.
Do I hear second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Say aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, what I will do, if you don't mind, I have Mr. Davenport for making the motion. Who seconded the motion?
Miss Brown, I believe.
Okay. And then, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I'll just go down the list to make sure we've got an accurate record of who's voted in favor of the minute being approved. So, starting with Mr. Don Brown.
I vote.
Okay, he's in the affirmative. David Davenport. Yea or nay?
Yes.
Brad Guth?
Yes.
Tucker Moore. Mr. Moore, yes or no?
Yes.
Ms. Rogerson, yes or no?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, you have unanimous approval.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is any public addresses to the board. Is there anybody that's interested in addressing the board this evening? Okay, well, we'll move on to our development review and the Three Oaks Development. Mr. Bryant, I believe, is going to be speaking to that.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The preliminary plan we have submitted is Three Oaks. It's located on Eastern Pines Road, south of its intersection with Applejack Drive in the Grimsland Township. It's going to be 21 lots, 22.3 acres, owned by the Britt Development Company of Archdale LLC. You can see here, this is the site area. This is off of Eastern Pines Road. This is a larger view, so you can get a better idea of where the location is. This is the preliminary plat we have submitted. The site is owned real residential with the minimum lots being 25,000 square feet. Two new streets are proposed. Electricity is to be provided by Greenville Utilities Commission. Water service to be provided by Eastern Pines Water. The comments and conditions on this plat from Pitt County Planning, all BMPs must meet the requirements of the Pitt County Sub Stormwater Ordinance. Ditch to be filled must be shown on all subsequent submittals, including the final plat for recordation. To add a note, site is located within a one-half mile voluntary agricultural district buffer. Correct the effective date on the FEMA map. The FEMA firm map, 1-2, 2004. Show riparian buffer around pond on Applejack Drive. Pitt County Environmental Health Septic Systems must be approved prior to final plat approval. And Pitt County Emergency Management requires one additional fire hydrant within Lot 1, within 400 foot of Lot 1. Greenville Utilities Commission Electric add a 15-foot electrical easement along Eastern Pines Road on existing overhead utilities to extend up to Lot 21, connecting to the proposed 10-foot electric easement along Three Oaks Drive. NC Department of Transportation requires a non-access easement to be placed along Eastern Pines Road. All lots must be served internally. A site triangle for either right-of-way or public utility easement must be placed at the intersection of Eastern Pines Road and Three Oaks Drive. A site triangle and either right-of-way or public utility easement must be placed at the intersection of Acorn Court and Three Oaks Drive. Driveway permit and encroachment agreements will be required. This is a picture of the proposed site from Applejack Drive facing southeast along Eastern Pines Road. This is a view looking down Applejack Drive and adjacent property on the northwest. This is viewing the adjacent property opposite of Applejack Drive and south of the proposed development. This is the view of the parcel located across Eastern Pines Road. And this is a view of the development site from Eastern Pines Road showing the current site condition. Adjacent property owners have been notified and staff has received a couple of phone calls in regards to the proposed development. Some inquiries include proposed lot sizes and general design. Recently, we've also received emails that we would like to present. Letter one, this is from Mr. Irving Hardy. Like to read all the way through. "I'm writing you to express a concern I have with the proposed subdivision located on parcel number 85456. I own a lot in Heritage Place next to this property, and I'm also build Heritage subdivision. I was also on the planning board for several years. My concern is with the water runoff from any development that is put on this property. Just over a year ago, Stuart Elks, who also owns a lot beside this property, cleaned out the ditch on this property from Applejack Road to Heritage Place to address water backing up. That helped the situation, but when we get a normal to heavy rain, it still backs up. It's even worse on the ditches downstream and the property backing up Heritage Place. The water overflows and covers the land on both sides of the ditches. Approving this subdivision without addressing the water situation will lead to major issues with water backup. It will also lead to septic tank issues when the water backs up and is not allowed to drain in a timely manner. I would recommend that the ditches be widened and cleaned out on both of the property in question, as well as ditches downstream to prevent any issues with flooding. There also needs to be some type of quick relief or buffer for the water runoff, such as a retention pond on site. I know the planning board and county does not want to deal with flooding and septic tank issues in the future. Will you please pass this concern on to the planning board for consideration? Please reply so I know you received this email. Thanks for your time, Urban Hardy." Letter number two. "As owner of number three and number five of Applejack Acres, as shown on the preliminary plat for Three Oaks subdivision, I'm submitting two comments to the Pitt County Planning Board for consideration as follows. Request that water egress from Applejack Acres across proposed Three Oaks subdivision be protected. Attention to buffer along Applejack Drive, which will be pleasing to both properties. Thank you for your consideration. Nellie G. Taylor." Letter number three. "I received the notice for public comments on proposed subdivision at parcel 85456. I reside at parcel 68419. Adding the subdivision will adversely affect my parcel 68419 and the parcels downstream of me. The drainage system and drainage tile need to be updated to support the proposed subdivision, 85456. Mr. Daryl Long." Technical Review Committee recommends conditional approval of this plat. Planning Board action. Preliminary plat review requires administrative action. The planning board may approve the preliminary plat with conditions to meet the requirements of the subdivision ordinance or disapprove the preliminary plat if any standard set forth in subdivision ordinance are not met."
Mr. Chairman, this is James again. I just wanted to indicate that we've had some follow-up dialogue today concerning both the stormwater issues and also issues relating to the questions by Ms. Taylor. So those items have been addressed with the stormwater issues. The main contention is most of the stormwater planning efforts will be handled at the construction plan phase, and therefore, there's indication at that point in time, the volume and the peak flow that would come off this site as it's developed. The preliminary stormwater calculations show that, in fact, there will be minimal and possibly even a decrease in the peak flow and the runoff coefficient from this property. So, at this point in time, we feel like any increase would be very minimal. Also, there would be improvements on site to help retain some of the water, stormwater through some of the roadside ditches, as well as the ditch that's being cleaned out and also widened as part of the development process. So with that, we feel like we've got a good handle on moving forward with the preliminary plat, but we've been invited, the adjacent properties to keep engaged, the property owners to keep engaged with this process, so we could hopefully factor in some of their concerns on the stormwater plan.
Thank you for those additional updates and comments. Does anybody on the board have any questions about the recommendation to approve the preliminary plat regarding the conditions and requirements that the staff or Mr. Bryant had presented to us?
I just had one question.
Okay.
Um, has there been any questions or is there any requirement for interconnectivity with Applejack Drive?
That's a good question, Ms. Rogerson. No, there hasn't. And remember, with our subdivision regulations, Applejack Acres happens to be, that drive happens to be a private drive. So the requirements for interconnectivity between public streets and private streets is not required. Uh, I will tell you, all the other property in the adjacent area was developed several years ago, and there were not any stubouts at that point in time required, and there's really nowhere else to stub out. In a perfect world, yes, we would love to have that interconnectivity. It's just not possible on this site.
Is this one going to be required? So we're not going to require any kind of, so I guess in the other side, it's developed too, correct?
Yes. This is pretty much the last remaining undeveloped parcel on the east, or I should say west side of Eastern Pines Road in that area. So there's no other way of connecting in.
Okay.
Are there any other questions from the board?
I have a question. Is there, is there any indicated easement between Applejack Drive and this new plot?
There is no easement. Again, typically, the easements would run along with some type of drainage improvement or some other utility improvement, and there are none in that particular area along the shared property line.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Being none, do I hear a motion on the approval recommendation to approve the preliminary plat?
Sorry, I had one more question.
Okay, no, absolutely.
Um, question about lot number 14. I know the neighbors had concerns about keeping the screening vegetation up. I guess with lot 13 and 14, is there going to be a vegetation requirement, or is there anything going to be preventing those property owners from taking that out and putting up a fence? And I guess the property owners on Applejack now looking at a fence versus vegetation?
Another good question, and that was one of our follow-ups to Ms. Taylor that was inquiring about how things would be improved along that particular property line. And in this case, in talking with the project engineer, the developer has no intentions on removing the row of trees or the buffer that's already there. However, the individual property owners, once they, if they go in and develop on those particular tracks, it is their prerogative as to whether they retain that woods line or not. And there is no buffer requirements between residentially used properties. So, right now, the intention is to retain it. The individual property owners may see a need for taking it down in the future.
All excellent questions. Any others? All right. Are we ready to move forward with a recommendation or motion?
Staff is ready unless you have more questions tonight.
I haven't heard anybody speak up yet.
I motion that we approve it.
Second, Don Brown.
So we had Maria Rogerson's motion to approve and Mr. Don Brown's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will go through and just make sure I've got an accounting for all that, starting with Don Brown.
Approved.
David Davenport.
Aye.
Mr. Guth.
Approve.
Mr. Moore. Tucker Moore.
I'm having, can you hear me?
Yes.
Approve.
Thank you. Maria?
Approved.
And Mr. Smith?
Approve.
That was unanimous, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, the next item on our agenda is the farm development review. Bryant going to handle that as well?
Yes, sir.
Right, thank you.
With this preliminary plan, Mr. Fagundes has requested, on behalf of the Cherry Construction Company, I respectfully request that the preliminary plat for the farm scheduled to be heard on tonight's planning board agenda be continued until a subsequent planning board meeting. As part of the technical review committee's review process, the planning department reviewed, issued U comment 13 requesting a street stub connection to parcel 35435 or 35436 due to the adjacent parcels being in the same ownership and greater than 10 acres. After review of this comment, parcel 35346 is less than 10 acres in size. Furthermore, parcel 35435 appears to have limited development potential, given the existing property features. Pitt County Drainage Lateral FS 21C bisects this parcel. And in addition to the intricacies of this water feature, we have can, we have concern about the potential septic suitability of the soils on this parcel. Again, we respectfully request the continuance of the preliminary plat for the farm, so we can continue to work with staff to investigate these items and provide additional documentation surrounding the condition of parcel 35435 in an effort to determine the appropriate course of action for the requested street stub. Our intention is to bring this item back to the planning board as quickly as we can complete the additional investigations. Thank you in advance for your consideration of this request, Brian Fagundes.
And Mr. Chairman, just to follow up a bit, we have talked some with Brian Fagundes just to ensure that this was the appropriate course of action, and staff does need additional information and data to go, to substantiate their request of not having a stubout. Ms. Rogers, Rogerson just asked about interconnectivity. It is a requirement of our subdivision regulations now, and the current recommendation from staff is that there needs to be a stubout in this location. We're waiting to see if there's additional compelling information that goes along with the criteria that needs to be considered and not have that requirement. So, we'll be working with the engineer over the next month to bring that back to you. So, our recommendation is also to postpone this until a subsequent meeting.
Okay. So, do I hear a motion to that effect from the board?
I'll make a motion.
I second that motion.
Mr. Moore has made the motion, and Ms. Rogerson has seconded. Would you like to go through, through a voice vote?
I would. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Don Brown, do you agree with the postponement?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Davenport?
Yes.
Mr. Guth?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Rogerson?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes.
That was also unanimous, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Well, I think the next item on the agenda is planning matters, which will go back to Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And we just have a few informational items for your attention tonight. Certainly, one of the major items that's on our work program right now and something that a couple of our planning board members are involved with, Mr. Davenport, Mr. Guth. We appreciate you serving on our committee that's looking at the NC 43 South Land Use Plan. We did, we were able to have a stakeholder meeting right before we started sheltering in place. So, in turn, we met with three different stakeholder groups, had 14 attendees back on March the 11th, received a lot of good input before we had our working group meeting, our first working group meeting, that same afternoon. So, we're just starting to collect the information, pull together information for the planning effort, and receive input from any of the stakeholders, landowners, utility providers, and so forth in that particular area. Most of you are aware of that area is seeing a lot of growth, and plus, there will be new road improvements for that particular segment, the northern segment of NC 43 South between Belshore and Worthington Crossroads, or I should say Hollywood Crossroads. So, here's just the picture. You can see Mr. Davenport, Mr. Guth, both were at this meeting, had a lot of good input, a lot of discussion. Our, this, no, no doubt, we're going to have some delays with creating the plan. We're trying to keep some efforts moving forward. We've got a website presence now. And so, just know, we're continuing to collect information, work with our consultant, and we will be providing more information about an updated review process and development process for this particular program. One of the first things that we'll deal with is getting an online survey, and hopefully, Mr. Chair, as well as Mr. Davenport, will be holding a possible remote meeting with the working group over the next month or two, and we may go ahead... and we may go ahead and start the online survey for some of our stakeholders after that. So, Mr. Chairman, welcome. Any questions or any input that you and Mr. Davenport may have about the NC 43 South plan?
Are there any questions from the board? Comments? All right, thank you for the update.
Okay, one other item, and this is a hot ticket item right now, is Census 2020. We realize that most people are at home, possibly in front of computers or cell phones. It is a great time to fill out your questionnaire for Census 2020. There have been a few delays already with Census 2020. The primary dates are still intact, but just know the field operations are going to be delayed. The enumerators are now slated to hit the field, not until June 1st, so that's been delayed a month or two. But here's the easy way that you can stop the enumerators from coming by your home. Go ahead and fill out your Census 2020 form online, or you may have received a hard copy. But it's really easy to go online, www.2020census.gov. Click on the respond, the green button. If you don't have the code, you can enter in your physical address for your residence, and it will take less than 10 minutes to complete the form. So please, if you're at home, take time to go online, fill this out. It helps our local government. It helps North Carolina. It helps us receive the funding through the federal and state governments that would, should be allocated to our local government here. So if you have any questions, we've got plenty of information on our website as well. One of the things that you can view online is the current response rates. So you can see nationally, a little bit less than 50% have responded. North Carolina's a little bit below that. Pitt County's a little bit below that. Our goal this year is 82%, and that mirrors what North Carolina also has for its goal. But along with this, you can also go online to this and use the app and find out what your community, what type of response rates you're seeing there. I will highlight at the bottom of the screen, Winterville is well over 55, 56% now. But you can see some other areas that are lagging way far behind that. So please, if at all possible, go online and respond to the Census 2020 questionnaire. Our Complete Count Committee, we've got a very diverse group that's been working for a number of months. We had great plans to be out on April 1st to celebrate Census Day. That didn't happen, but we're still promoting this the best we can, and this is one of the efforts we're trying to accomplish tonight. So please let us know if you have any questions about the 2020 Census.
Thank you for your work on the complete count. Has all the board members completed their census already?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Perfect.
No, sir.
All right. You and the folks in Bethel and Faulkland, you need to get on the stick and get that completed.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for putting everyone on the spot. Just a couple of other informational items, just to make you aware. Woodmore Farms subdivision road improvements. Our office, along with legal staff and engineering and a number of other entities have worked on that for a number of years now. We're glad to say that's been completed and those roads have been accepted for maintenance by the Department of Transportation. So that road, that has been closed out. We did have a conditional district rezoning with the commissioners back a couple of months ago. We did want to bring attention also, our annual report and a lot of the good work that you've helped us with over the last year is now highlighted in our annual report that's online. So we welcome you to go in and take a look at it. We have our departmental monthly reports in there for the last couple of months when we didn't meet. So those are in your package tonight along with some other correspondence. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all that staff has for tonight, but we welcome any questions you may have.
Super. Awesome job, staff. Mr. Bryant, appreciate your presentations this evening. Are there any questions from the board for the planning staff? All right, hearing none, do I hear a motion to, we adjourn?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Second.
Second.
And we have plenty of seconds. So we're adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, planning board members, for joining us remotely tonight.